Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right, next is approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda other than we have nine I authorized advertisement for bids for Phase Two wastewater project and eleven F resolution ordering advertised for bids for Phase Two. Anybody else have anything else?
You could delete thirteen A.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Public comment, is there anyone here from the public that like to comment on something that's not on the agenda? Okay. And our public hearings will be at six forty-five, six fifty, that for seven B and seven C, right?
Yep.
Six forty-five, six fifty. All right, we'll go to seven A, then we have a variance request. Kelly, how are you?
Fine, how are you tonight?
Not bad.
Great.
Um, do you want to come up and step up to the podium there and?
Yeah, for the public, give your name and address.
Kelly McConnell, six one five Emory Street, Tracy, Minnesota.
The planning commission approved the variance for an extension on the deck?
Yes.
And the neighbors were all in favor, so brought it to council for public hearing approval.
Any issues Shane, from your end? I'd make a motion to approve.
Motion made in second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed, motion approved. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
That wasn't that bad. Uh, next petitions requesting communications. Jeff, you presented, you got some we had in our desk here about flower budget commitment.
I emailed it to Diane just for your information and if there's any questions about it. About a month ago when we were in, we talked about the baskets for fourteen, so I've got some firm numbers for you for that. And then also numbers for next year's baskets I figured it just as well so you guys know what the cost will be so you can make your decisions based on factual numbers instead of possible numbers.
Okay, so on, on this Jeff, if I'm reading this right, for the downtown and some of Highway fourteen, six thousand two hundred and seventy. And then total investment for the city, that'd be everything?
That'd be the new fourteen baskets on the poles and what you're doing, yeah, that's based on these years, this year's numbers.
Okay, so that's eleven thousand six hundred and seventy dollars.
Correct.
So my, here's my question, because I'm still not clear on this. So the city, is it my understanding the city cannot solicit or ask for donations for those, but you could do that on the city's behalf, correct?
We've done, yeah, that's how, all the, if you look at that number on the bottom there, that forty-seven hundred and eighty, that's what the city, or that's what individuals and other businesses paid me this year for the baskets that are hanging around town or the bigger pots that are sitting by some of their doors.
Which would then come out of this number?
No, no, that's, that's the cost of the basket or the pot to them. What, how you guys are doing this is the city buys eight hanging baskets and pots. The two big pots that are out in the frontier, plus six hanging baskets. Because of their, they own half the property downtown.
Okay, so this is just city property? That, this?
Yes.
The eleven?
The fifty-eight is for watering of all of them. Yep, fifty-eight is for watering all of them.
Okay.
From this year, okay? And the city, out of that amount, the city pays for eight, six hanging baskets and two big containers. And then the businesses pick up the rest. So if you take eight plus fifty, that comes up with your total of fifty. There's fifty individuals and, and other businesses that, that sponsor baskets and pay for those. We bill those people directly from Greenwood Nursery.
So you're not asking any of these people to fund the city portion of it?
No.
Right.
No, the city is, they're, they're funding, what they're helping out with is watering.
Got you, okay.
The watering, the care, you know, the maintenance of those plants.
So I guess, I mean, we certainly could ask, can we ask for people to donate toward those baskets?
I, it's gonna be a tough sell because we've tried getting more businesses on fourteen to do that. You might get some individuals if you advertise for it.
But I, I'm just wondering if we, it seems to me like somewhere I heard we can't do fundraising or solicitation, or I don't think we can, right? So an individual could do it on behalf of the city, but the city can't do it for some reason.
We've, we've hit, tried to hit every business in the spring to offer, you know, a container in front of their business.
Right.
Or hanging baskets for the main downtown area.
Like the big one Tom has out in his business, he's paying for that.
He's paying for that one, the city pays to water. Seager pays for those, and then city pays for the water, correct.
Okay, I'm clear on that.
That was, that was done about five years ago, when Roger Gores was here.
No, that's fine, I, I'm clear on that.
That's, that's how that works.
So, our question is then, do we want to budget and spend the additional funds for Highway fourteen? I mean, well first of all, do we want to continue what we're doing downtown, right? Yes. And then do we want to add on Highway fourteen? Yeah, we, we had that discussion before, I think we should. Right, but we gotta figure out where to.
No, there's a dollar.
Where's the money?
Money problem.
What's that? Well, it's two people and we're gonna spend at least thirty-five, or thirty-five to forty minutes when we put them up in front of the store. I, you know, I haven't done them on fourteen, you gotta watch traffic a little bit closer there. Those were in the ditch, so it went pretty fast for us, but, but I'm figuring about a half hour for two people, so about an hour. So you got one guy in the tractor, one guy in the basket, on the tractor attaching them to the one or two. So you got two bolts that, you gotta get it to the right height and you gotta try to measure so they're evenly, you know, put in the right height. So we're figuring about ten feet off the ground if you put these up, that's what I've got at the store in front. So that way they're seen without craning your neck up, some of the baskets, we get a few complaints here in downtown because the baskets are so much higher that they don't really see them as well unless you're a distance back. When you're going down fourteen, you're gonna wanna, you're gonna have a few seconds to visually see them because you're going thirty-five miles an hour.
And in your case, you're gonna want to have some, make sure your people are safe when they're watering and that's only extra to it all.
Yeah, that, that part of it isn't, if you got flashing lights on, you're fine, but it's, it's just the idea. Once you got the bracket hung, that, we'll leave that bracket up, that's a one-time deal installing the bracket. And then the pots are very durable, they'll last a long time. We've dropped them on the concrete up here. The pin has come out of the, Shane's picked up a couple for us and it's amazing that, that pot full of soil and water can hit the concrete without breaking, but they, they do, so. Shane's picked up a couple, we've picked up a couple, we've had business owners bring them back out to us after they've dropped and we just go hang them again, or hang a new basket, because usually the ones that hit the ground, the floors are pretty well beat up on them. But we keep extras, this price includes us keeping extras at the store and taking care of them. If we do get one that the wind beats the heck out of or we missed watering it or whatever, we replace it. And there's no additional charge, it's built into the price.
That's, I see you've got that noted up on the top there that, yeah.
It's just if you guys do the fourteen, I'm buying the basket, or, you know, that's how we did the pots downtown. I own the pots around town, it's just that nice to have a commitment from the city. If we're gonna put that expenditure in, then it's not a one-year deal and I've, I'm gonna be stuck with baskets that aren't gonna get hung up again, so. And so I, it is, it is a more of a long-term plan for you guys, I know, but I don't wanna, I placed, tentatively placed an order for these pots to get them at a better price at the buying show that I just got back from a couple of weeks ago. I can still cancel if you guys say no, but it'd be nice to know, have a decision in the next week or so.
The only variable would be over that ten years, and I know it's hard for you to answer that, but would be the, what the cost is gonna be?
Right, it, I've kept this price same for three years. I went up on this price compared to the last three years now. Madonna asked me that and I said, you know, that's gonna vary with labor costs, material costs. But I try to keep it as the same so it doesn't change. And you'll, you guys, if we go up in price, this council will be notified prior to budgeting that, that, you know, we're gonna go up ten bucks or whatever it might be, so. But I plan on keeping this price for two years at least, you know, I don't foresee a change in, or I won't change it.
What is the budget? We still have time, but?
We gotta have a preliminary, let me read on the next meeting if I remember right. It can always go down, but it can't go up from there.
I wonder, do you know what Madonna budgeted in for this right now, for next year? I would assume she's got something in there.
Well, she didn't have these numbers until I emailed it to Diane.
Well, for, for the additional, but I'm just thinking of the history of, just downtown.
Yeah, it should be, that's, that's changed a little bit, but, you know, that fluctuates year to year. It depends on how many baskets or containers we can sell to the other businesses or individuals that, that do it. We've got a list that do it every year, but then sometimes that changes. You know, like this year was, I think, eight less than last year. I think there were sixty-four that we did last year and this year we did fifty-eight, so that fluctuates a little bit, you know, from year to year. The highest was last year, the lowest was back when, before the city started to help and take care of them. So, six by six years ago, whatever it was.
Well, when we talked about it, we said we needed, we should do something on fourteen, because it certainly helps the downtown. I mean, that was the consensus that we should do it.
But you'll see a lot of people, if we do our job right, you're gonna get a lot of comments on fourteen. We get a lot of comments from the ones that people see downtown, if we do our job right. But.
So what happens, I mean, does it have to be like for a ten-year term?
Well. If it was five years, I'd be all right with that, if that's all they wanted to give me, I'm just asking for a longer-term commitment. You know, I've gotta recoup those, you know, unless the city wants to buy the pots themselves and then I, then they can do it a annual basis. You own the pots, it doesn't matter to me, I'm just trying to help the city out by buying the containers and the, and the hoops, you know, the bracket that goes on the poles, just to help this thing go. But if, if the city wants to buy those, then you can do a one-year commitment, I don't, I don't care. It's just an additional cost to the city that I'm trying to help cover, you know, so we can get this going.
Well, I mean, I see that part, but I'm thinking like in five years from now, if it's, you know, or?
Yeah, well, a commitment's only as good as people giving it, you know, the council could change five years from now, who knows?
It will, yeah.
But, yeah, I know, but if Madonna's, or whoever the administrator is, has got something in writing and I've got it, then we've at least got a longer term than one year.
I mean, it's a budget, it's a budget, it's just a budget item, I mean, if we're gonna do it, we budget it in, there'd be no reason not to, you know.
Well, just, for a reference, that, that eleven-six number, that would represent historically a one percent increase in the levy. Just so we know what we're looking at. And I think the great products, I think they'd do wonderful on Highway fourteen, it really would dress that up. But it's.
One percent.
They can throw it in and see what, what we're gonna get, but if you look at that and, and you look at the twenty grand she wants for the pitch holes in the walls there, that she said the state's gotta have. It, then there was another project too, it's gonna add up, I mean, put them in there, but until you get to the final budget numbers, you don't know what's gonna stand the test of the calculator. That's why I'd hate to commit now, but we don't have it.
Yeah.
And I, I'd like to see them, I just, I gotta see all the numbers, yeah.
So Jeff, you said you want an answer like at least by two weeks?
If, if you can give me an idea, I mean, otherwise I'm gonna cancel the order and then I might have to pay more for them. That's the only thing I'm trying to, trying to save myself about ten percent on the purchase price of the product is all I'm doing is, you know, by getting the commitment.
Yeah, for, for me personally, if you're all right with five years, I think we could enter something into five years because we've already indicated that it would benefit fourteen. And I understand about the money, but I think we could, we should be able to budget for it and find out some ways to fit that in for worthwhile projects like this. So my view is that with the numbers here, if we could have a, a five-year commitment and then figure into the budget to make this a priority to do it, because we've often said that fourteen needs something. So instead of having to raise a levy, you know, a one percent, there's other ways we can look at the, cutting it to be able to accommodate this expenditure.
I'm all right with five years, it's, at least it's a commitment that we can recoup some of that cost back.
So that, that would be my position, but I can't make a motion for that, someone else would have to. Well, does this, I don't know if the decision has to be made tonight. Well, I'm just going off what Jeff's thinking.
Well, the main reason I'm here is I can't.
I mean, I could make a motion that if we could manage to budget this project, we'd go for a five-year commitment. Which is, we got a commitment, but we don't know if we're gonna get anything, I mean, I, I'd support that.
Yeah, then that's my point, is until we do the budget and see what the numbers are, we don't know what we're gonna have to cut or, or add.
Right.
We may get to the budget and find out, we've gotta cut a lot more than this out of it, is the only, is, is the point. So I would be okay with that too, I mean, we, but I think when we, we should still have that commitment for him within two weeks, shouldn't we? Is our next meeting the budget meeting? Yeah.
The eleven.
Yeah. That's why I'm at this meeting, because I knew the budget was coming up and we need to know, I need to know.
And my memory could be bad, it may have to be the end of September, but I'm thinking it's the first meeting in September, we gotta set the preliminary. And then we gotta have the final by the last meeting in November.
So the, the additional cost, Jeff, it would be the twenty-eight eighty to buy the bask, is that what you're?
Twenty-eight eighty is, is.
Buy twenty-four new baskets, that's the order you?
Well, yeah, that's what the, that's what, I'm actually buying more than that, but that's the cost per basket.
Right.
So if the city wanted to buy twenty-four, you know, and not have a commitment to be, you know, then that's what you guys had, end up paying for them.
You know, because the other thing we could agree to do is if for some reason we cut that, that we, that we purchased those.
We got a six forty-five public hearing.
Can you hold tight for a second, because we got two public hearings that?
Sure, you want me to stick around?
Please, then we'll go back and revisit it.
All right.
Uh, we'll call, we'll call for the six forty-five public hearing. It's a hearing amending ordinance six fourteen subdivision two, the monthly sewer rate changing for the months. And Shane, is there any overview you want to give on that, other than changing the months that we figure out what to base the sewer fee on?
Yeah, it's the same as, what was discussed on the last meeting, just changing the sewer rates so they're based when people are not gone for winter months, to base their whole year of sewer service on, so.
Okay.
And those months we agreed on were more summer time.
March, where was it? It was spread out throughout the year though, four months that were spread out through the year.
April, September and October.
Okay. Okay, is anybody here from the public to be heard on that? Okay, seeing no one, refer it back to the councils, anybody have any questions about this ordinance amendment?
Motion made in second, any of discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right, and next then we have a, a public hearing for six fifty. It's a hearing to amend the twenty seventeen fee schedule for water sewer and surcharge rates. And Shane, any quick overview you would like to do about that before we turn it over to the public for any comment?
I guess this is just one of the increases that need to be done in order to be able to finance our existing projects with water and sewer systems, I guess it's a stepping stone in the right direction. We discussed it last meeting, but change the surcharge rates around. And then increasing the water sewer and then the base fees and the usage fees.
Okay, anybody here from the public want to discuss or talk about the fee schedule for water sewer surcharge rates? Okay, no one, refer it back to the councils, anybody have any questions or comments about the?
So, I gotta get it straight in my head, and the base rate charge for, when they're saying ten to nineteen potential users, that's, what are we, what are we talking about there? Then you got a base rate charge of twenty-plus potential users?
So.
It's not gonna affect the single-family dwelling, that's my, okay, that was my question.
So if you get enough, I don't know if O'Brien Court would maybe be one of them that would fall into that?
Or somebody wanted to build a department for that twenty units?
That has, yeah.
That base rate, that fee would go up to that six forty-five? Just for the being, okay?
Yep.
That's, I just wanted to clear it up for you. I would make a motion to, to change the rates in accordance with the ordinance number.
Second.
You know what though, I had a quick question though, how come the hotels rates doesn't change? Where'd I see that? It said stay the same, where was that?
Oh, down here in the handwritten part?
Yeah.
The hotel motel.
I don't have to change it.
By two point six per meter. Phone number is at the end, or? It's in the handwritten part.
You gotta go down one farther.
The unit rate.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah.
Page thirty-nine.
What do you mean, is this handwritten?
Ah, thirty-nine.
Right.
The hotel motel, the institutional and the educational. That's for the surcharge? Yep. Service charge, yep.
No, we never, we didn't discuss it at the last meeting on most particular items, it was more.
Just the houses?
Yeah.
I think that's the basis of determining the fee. So number of bedrooms.
So they would be removed, yeah.
Two point six per meter, so I, I think.
Oh, so it's not like that didn't?
That's just setting the rate, not what, not charging them, but that rate calculation, that would make sense. Because they could have high, I mean, they're, they could have usage already around and be higher and it could.
It all refers back to the increased rate, so.
So those still get charged off of their usage, it's just the amount we charge.
How you figure out how you charge?
They would be, yeah, removed from that calculation.
Any other questions?
The motion was to approve resolution twenty seventeen sixty-five.
I second that.
Other questions? All in favor of adopting resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay, Jeff?
One thing I think that you really, fourteen is, should be a separate issue than the downtown. We've been doing the downtown and this is the eighth year. And so I'd hate to see you take that away if you decide not to do fourteen, which I understand the, the cost there, but, you know, they've, they get a lot of, I think the city gets a lot of good comments from the downtown.
Yeah, I would agree, Jeff, I was, I was gonna say this.
So don't, don't put the two together when you're trying to do this, it's a, you know, an additional to, addition to the city, and it's just a more costly because you don't have anybody helping sponsor the baskets.
Right, and I, that was the whole premise of this anyway, we were gonna talk about, should we add Highway fourteen? I don't think any of us had even talked about or thought about not having downtown.
Yeah, right.
So that's a good point, that that, we need to separate the two.
So you're really, it's.
Our question is, do we want to add Highway fourteen and have that additional cost?
It's fifty-four hundred dollars basically is what you're doing on fourteen.
Because I gotta believe that that, the downtown dollar amount's gotta be in our budget already, I'm sure it is.
Yeah, I think she was planning on that part.
So, so then it's, it's a good point saying this, this is not an additional eleven thousand, it's an additional.
No, it isn't, it isn't additional, you're already doing the one. It's whether, whether you wanna spend.
That's why it's gotta be clear.
Right, it's whether you wanna spend the extra fifty-four hundred dollars to do fourteen, so, so that's.
Well, my view is, I think we should, because we talked about it and said that we need to.
Yeah, I feel about Highway fourteen, so.
Yeah, I mean, well, not just because you live there.
No, I'm just saying.
No, I think we need to.
It does need it, I mean, if your fourteen doesn't look good, what's gonna make them go down?
I agree.
Well, when you look at the traffic counts, fourteen's got about two thousand cars a day. Fourth Street South has got nineteen hundred cars a day, but most of those are just going to the school. But Fourth Street is, is the second busiest street you got in town, and so the baskets are seen on Morgan and Fourth and, and not as much on, on Third Street. But if you got the busiest street in town that's beautiful, which is fourteen, it's gonna be a big.
And it wouldn't break your heart if you got fourteen and lost it downtown, but.
Well, I won't. It'll break my heart if we're not doing it on fourth, or on downtown.
No, I understand.
I mean, I, there's a lot of people that really enjoy it. There are a lot of people that enjoy it, so, you know, the retail is moving to fourteen, you know, or to that area. But you still have your service businesses down here that benefit from it, so.
All right, so we had a motion, or, or did we, saying that, but it was kinda, it was kinda like saying if we budget it, we're gonna do it. Yeah, Tony was gonna make that motion.
Yeah, the, the motion to, you know, for a five-year commitment, if we can make a budget to do both, without.
But it'd be a basically a fifty-four hundred dollar increase to what you've been doing, so.
Right, so if we can find a way to put that in the, put that fifty-four hundred dollar budget, I would, I would second that. Well, I hope that's enough for you then to be.
Well, it is, it's, you know, until you guys finalize it, it's, it's not in concrete, but, you know, I'm not gonna cancel my order until, yeah, I absolutely have to if I don't get a commitment somehow, you know, from you, but I'm sure Madonna will be back in contact with me later when.
I, well, I can say is even though what, what this is being said, I, I, I do believe we would be able to find the money, because we do all agree that it's important on fourteen, so something has to be done.
Yeah, well, it's a starting point, you know.
Okay, so it's a motion that's made in second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
If anybody's got questions later, just give me a call.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right, next is the airport maintenance and operation grant contract.
This is for the annual maintenance for the airport, mowing, moving snow and the minor repairs. It's pretty much the same as it has been in the years past, so and that's your, right now it's a twenty-five seventy-five split. We pay twenty-five percent and Minda reimburses us up to the seventy-five percent of the cost, up to twenty-eight, twenty-eight thousand one hundred something, twenty-nine B.
That's a two-year contract, right?
Yes.
It's one of them where we get money instead of spending a lot.
Yeah, I was just looking where the number is again. Phone nine D, I just can't see the dollar.
Twenty-eight, one sixty-eight for a total of fifty-six, three thirty-six for two years. Twenty-eight, one sixty-eight for a total of fifty-six, three thirty-six for two years. FY eighteen and nineteen.
Yeah, so state fiscal year eighteen and nineteen.
Page twelve. I would make a motion to sign that agreement.
Second that.
Motion made in second. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Next is a farm lease for Tracy Chapter of FFA. We have that in our packet, too. Anybody have any questions about that lease, proposed lease?
Is that the same that it has been?
I believe so.
The price?
Comes out to be about one eighty an acre.
Sounds good to me.
And they've worked around...
Everything going on?
Everything going on with the solar farms and all that stuff that may or may not get there. Okay.
When are the solar people putting that thing up?
Right now.
Yeah?
Yep.
I'd make a motion to approve that contract.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Uh, next, uh, we're gonna have a closed meeting then after the regular meeting to discuss the AFSMI and the contract negotiations.
Yep.
Uh, next, nine E, National Night Out, and we have, uh, a letter from the committee in our packet, uh, requesting some financial help in the future for the cost of putting that on. I don't know if anybody's got any questions or comments about that, or just another item that we would have to budget for. I think it, it's a good event. Very well attended.
Did, I mean, it said free will offering. Was there much of a free will offering this year or the last couple of years, or?
I don't know what their numbers are. I'm just going off what they're saying, that they lost money. I don't know exactly what they brought in.
It'd be nice to see what their, what their budget was and what their, I mean, were they requesting donations? Did they try to, you know, solicit funds? Did they? I mean, I know they asked for, for donations. I mean, some of us donated, you know, I know businesses got asked.
They don't really, it's not exactly what they're looking for either.
Were the fund, yeah, so maybe we just need more information. The other thing, did the city give anything toward that in the past? Do we budget it for it, or this was all on their own?
Yeah, we're...
Just our prep work.
Yep, time.
Time that we donate or, yeah.
Yeah, probably more detail on that, just so we know what we're... I mean, it's like, it, was the cost a thousand dollars, you know, because it's three thousand, and then we brought in twenty dollars at the event, or, you know, two hundred, or what was it?
Right. Yeah, I, I guess I'd like to find out more information and see what they actually had for a budget and balance sheet when it was done.
All right, we'll just, um, contact...
Table through the next.
Yeah, for someone from that committee, so they can come and explain actually why they, they would need that contribution, other than saying that, oh, they're losing it.
Well, and I, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add to that. Not only have them come in and tell us that, but I'd like to actually see numbers ahead of time, so we...
See what they took in.
Right, right, what they're...
Fair enough. All right, so we'll table that the next meeting. Uh, nine F, the lease agreement between the city and the school, and we have that, uh, in our packet, and the reason for this lease agreement is because they're the ones that fronted the money for the improvements that we have, and that's the agreement that we had with them was, for over those years, they wouldn't pay anything to use it. Does anybody have any questions about that lease agreement?
I didn't see any big changes from before, from a couple of years ago, other than the payment schedule, so I would make a motion to enter into that lease agreement.
Other than people had circled some typos that were in there.
Correct the copy.
I'll second.
All right, motion made in second. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Next, we have a request to waive the cable cast fee to play Sunday Mass for the Methodist Church.
What do we, what do we charge for that?
Said a hu- a hundred bucks.
Yep, for the year.
Hundred for the year?
For the whole year?
For the year. Um, I know Adam does have to rip whatever form of...
Yep. I understand.
Yeah, we have your letter.
So, uh, we would like to encourage that for churches, it'd be a public service, and we understood that's kind of what the intent was in the past. We'd like to see if that could continue, so not to charge the money.
I, yeah, when, when we brought up to our administrative council, that's what they had recommended before. Because it wasn't in our, in, in our fee schedule, it wasn't in our budget to do that to begin with. In the past, when they have always done that, there wasn't a fee associated with it for the churches to put that telecast on there, which was out at the nursing home and several other places. So, when we received that, that after the new equipment was put in for the city, that there would be a fee for it, that's kind of where it, it was like, okay, what, I mean, I understand that it changed because they put in new equipment, but...
Well, yeah, it's both that, but you also have to realize that it's a hundred dollars for the whole year.
Absolutely.
So, you know, we're, we're just trying to cover some of the cost for the employee to, to do that. I mean, we, we invested a lot of money in the, you know, the equipment and all that, but it's really a minimal fee to, you know, have a person that's, you know, that's doing that is my...
What would it take them? About a half hour, forty-five minutes at a minimum to do it?
Depends on the form that they submit, but he thought about an hour.
Okay, see, I didn't even...
Do they have to change that to a different format, is what the deal is?
They had to rip it to a different format. It used to be that you could bring in a DVD and we could pop it in and play.
Right, and that's what was done before, so that it could be popped in and played. Is there a format that we could put that in, so that that wouldn't be required by one of the employees to do that? Okay.
We went, we went faster than this.
Because we're willing to do that.
Technology than...
Right. You know?
So, yeah, I think the hundred is just to cover incidental costs, just to cover things a little bit, but...
And, and we understand that, and I don't know if there's other ones that are requested from any of the other churches to do that or not.
Not as of yet.
Not as of yet, okay. I, we didn't know, so that's, but that's what our request was. We realized that anybody that's putting something on there on the city sta... Obviously, I, I don't live in the city, so, you know, I'm, I'm not sure what else on the city station, so, um, Jackie is, I guess I'm not, but I know we've had several people from our congregation that, that's, they were wondering why it's not on there, you know? Because they were told for a couple of months, they said, well, the new equipment was coming, so when's it gonna be back on there on the, on the station? Well, and it hasn't been, so... And now we're getting to seven or eight months or whatever since it's been on, so... Um, currently, we take out to the nursing home out there, because they're able to put it directly out to the nursing home. I don't know how they do that, but whatever. That's their business, not ours, so... Um, but they would like to see it returned back to the station also, for, for the city station. So that's why our request was for that, just for the, for the churches to do that as a public service, to tell it, you know, to put it on for there, so... That's, that's what we're asking, and, and we understand it's a minimal cost, I get that, but we're, you know, if we could put it into a different format or do something else, we gladly would, but can't, so, that answers that question, so... Is, is there any questions you have of us, I guess? That's what I'm asking. So currently, there's no other, as far as church services or church organizations that are putting on anything as far as any of the other church stuff on there? Okay. Okay, so currently, what do they have on the city station, if I may ask? Because I don't see it, so I don't know what's on it.
Council meetings and...
Stuff like that is what's on there?
Yeah.
Whatever that show was from.
Fairmont?
Yeah.
Okay, so they do like public service things on there, or, or, uh, community service type things, or what? What, what's the show from Fairmont, or what?
It's like, I, I don't know, like a, not a comedy, is it? I, I never watched it.
That's what they have a council meeting on for, or what?
Well, the council meeting is the comedy, you're right.
Okay, that's...
Serious drama is what's on Fairmont.
Okay, I didn't know what was on the city station, so that's, I mean, I, I'd say it in fun, I'm just...
Yeah, no, no.
I'm just asking. I, I don't know what they have on there.
Basically, what was on in the past is on there now that, that the city's called for water, hooked up to you.
Yep.
Contacted from...
Okay, any public service note, like, if they're having something, or, okay, okay. See, in the past, they had done that on Tuesdays for, I, I believe, eight or nine years it was on there, every, every week that they had it on there, so...
Box care day parade will be on, I'm assuming, again this year.
Right.
Can you tape that again?
I would guess that'd be on there, and, but, a hundred bucks on that. Well, my only point, and, and thank you, I, I don't know, we...
Yeah, I don't think we have any questions.
No, and that's fine. I, I just, like I say, I realize that it's a minimal cost for that, but we weren't really, you know, why was the cost of it? That's why we didn't, we didn't understand it had to be in a different format.
Yep.
Right.
And if we can do that into a format, that'd be great, but if they can't, I get that. No question?
No, we just have to discuss whether or not we approve what you're requesting.
I, like I say, I mean, we respectfully request that we can put on there. I, I assume that's when they put it on, was the Tuesday, and I don't care what time they put it on, but, you know, it's, it's just, the nursing home was the main thing that they had asked about it to do, so, and we have some of our congregation that's, that's homebound, they can't get to the church service, so... Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Yep.
You bet.
My only issue is, is that I, I don't want to start doing this again. We asked for this fee schedule to be put together. You know, we asked for specifically to start charging for more things, and we all approved of that.
Yep.
So, if we're gonna start now saying, oh, wait a minute, make this exception, that exception, I, I just think that, you know, the council needs to, we've made these decisions, we've given Madonna the authority to come up with the fee schedule, and she put work into that and did so. And I think now we need to support those fee schedules, and, you know, to me, it, it has nothing to do with who it is. I mean, it's just the fact that it's a very minimal cost to help cover some of the city expense of putting that in, so my, my opinion would be that we continue to charge the fee that we've put out there, but I don't know how the rest of you feel about...
I would agree with that. Yeah, I agree.
Can I ask one question?
Absolutely.
Is, is there any, been anybody else that's paid to put on there anything? I mean, is there any other paid advertisement, or, I don't know if that's the right word, but some other programming or, or advertisement on there?
It's advertisement, not programming.
Okay.
Yep, um, I think Toys for Tots paid for it, um, St. Mary's paid to advertise their, um, church lunch.
Okay, okay, no, I'm just asking, because I don't get the city channel, obviously, so, just was curious if there are doing other things that were put on there that were paid for, so, okay?
And at that price, that's a heck of a deal, I mean...
Oh, I, yeah, I don't, I don't dispute that a bit. I understand completely. You guys spent a lot of mon... I mean, the city spent a lot of money to put in this equipment. I, I totally understand, so... Okay, no, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right, uh, the water tower update, we had that in our working session.
Does that require any council action change to? We don't, it's not going out for bids, I mean, the bid amount wouldn't be that...
It's under twenty thousand, so it doesn't need to.
All right, next is authorized advertisement for bids for Phase Two of the wastewater project.
I wholeheartedly make a motion for the advertising of bids for Phase Two.
Motion made in second, and then we'll also take care of eleven F, them two. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Uh, okay, next, legal issues. How much to levy for the infrastructure replacement reserve fund and sequence of events? Anybody have any questions about that?
That was for that storm sewer.
Right. I would, uh, I would make a motion to do a four-dollar tax on every parcel per year for a storm sewer. Replacement reserve fund.
It's gotta be a dollar figure, I think.
What's that?
The forty-four?
I don't know that it can be like per, like...
A specific dollar figure per parcel?
It's gotta be a specific, yeah. A specific dollar amount to levy, like fifty thousand.
Total amount?
A total amount.
So then if her math is correct, the total amount would be fifty-three, seven, sixty?
She had them both figured in there.
Well, then she put, I'm suggesting that you levy fifty thousand per year as the middle ground between the two.
Yeah, let's, let's keep it simple, go with the four dollars on every parcel and...
And go with the forty-four, three, four?
What, that'd be the fifty-three, seven, sixty?
Fifty-three, seven, fifty-three.
Seven sixty.
Oh, no, that would hit some people twice, wouldn't it?
Could.
Because not everybody got their parcels put back together. I would do it on the water bill.
Do we require an ordinance change?
Or go with the ninety-two, three, or forty-four thousand?
Fund itself as a one?
Yeah, because you go by parcels. You're gonna be putting levies, like, you have somebody, and I'll use my property, for instance, when I purchased it, I had three parcels.
So the, we, we would do the first bullet point, one, the four dollars on the...
In order to have the infrastructure replacement reserve fund, it would have to be levied. I don't think you could put it on the water bill and make it go, so you'd have to have a whole different agenda item and possible legal work to do that. I think that's why they want it.
And I think at the last, well, two meetings ago, or last meeting, um, there was several options that Matt had.
Yep.
Yeah.
Went forth, and I think it was decided to do the levy.
Yep.
Want to approve or be certifying to the county for the two thousand eighteen levy?
Yep, so it's gonna go on all the parcels. She's just trying to show you how she calculated her suggestion of fifty thousand.
And this is strictly gonna be used for storm sewer? Well, using, using that logic, even if it's kept strictly for storm sewer, per parcel is the best way of doing it, because whatever runs off there is gonna go into the storm sewer, so let's...
I don't think it can be done by parcel.
Well, the county does it by parcel and they tax it out.
Right, but...
It'd be a flat fee per parcel.
We, we would say the dollar amount, but the county's gonna do it by...
I think if you do it that way, don't you need a public hearing, though?
Yeah, I can look at the minutes from last time, because I know Matt, there was a whole discussion about it.
But if you levy it as a whole dollar amount, you don't.
Doesn't matter how they do it then. They will leave the parcel part out of it.
Right.
Either way, it's the same result.
Right, we just gotta, we gotta vote on the dollar amount.
Fifty thousand dollars.
Yes, yes.
All right, will somebody make that motion?
So you don't talk to the main story?
Uh, no, that's, that's fine. Chasing their tails around a tree based on what's written, and then come up with the, the same one we started with, except different. So... The city does ordain pursuant to the statute four seventy-one to levy a property tax, either percentage of a property's value or a flat fee. So, if I go back to the fifty-three, four dollars per, my original motion, it is spelled out in the resolution, but you can do it either, either way. So if you go to four dollars per parcel for fifty-three thousand dollars, it complies with the verbiage in the resolution. So I go back to my motion, four dollars per parcel, for the total of fifty-three, whatever it came to.
Fifty-three, seven, sixty. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Motion made in second, and then there's discussion.
So just so we're clear, it's the dollar amount, that's the total dollar amount. How the county does it, it's listed in there, they can do it by the, by percentage or by...
Madonna will have to levy the fifty-three thousand, seven, sixty.
Right.
Right.
Correct, to the county, and then how they...
How they do their math.
Do that math out, but it's gonna come out to about four dollars a, a parcel is what the point was. So we're, we're... So we're, we're, it's the same, we're, we're talking the same thing, we're just saying it differently.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
I think that public hearing on that would be the truth in taxation, if there's any questions or. Because it's not gonna be, it'll be in the levy going forward from that date.
Okay, go to resolutions, we took care of A. B. C. D.
Need E.
Yep, for the paid Dunick for the remainder of their, uh.
I'd make a motion for the payment.
Second it.
Motion made and seconded, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Next, we have the consent calendar, the municipal accounts payable, municipal accounts receivable, the department head reports, which we had at the working session. And the multipurpose center minutes from seven seventeen seventeen. Any questions or comments about the consent calendar?
I've got one question, while we were in discussion. General engineering and, and water tower for INS, what was that? I forgot to write the amount down, I just, there was.
That was for them to go through the proposals for, with KLM.
Okay, so it was both that, that makes sense, and, and then, what did we have G and R do out the compost bit, electric wise?
Uh, we had them fix the, there's an underground break at some point, which is why the light didn't work.
Oh.
The light entering the compost by the gate.
And then we, um, we found out when we tried to hook, uh, security up there, so.
No problem, I, I'm just curious.
I was impressed, it didn't take them long to find that, I mean, they got at it pretty quickly and.
That's all the questions I have.
Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, new business, anybody have any new business? Mayor and Council of Communications.
Are we televising the parade? I just had a question on that.
We, we should, I, I think we should request it, I think Adam set up the camera out here last year, it'll just be going the opposite direction.
I'll get the start of it to parade to the end.
Yeah, so I, I, yeah, I, I would encourage us to do that. Um, I just had a couple of things, one, I just want to clear up, now in this lot, again, um, Tony, you're on the planning zoning, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so for the Gramstead lot that's on the east side of the Fitness Depot that runs north to south, that they want to sell to build a home there. Did I, am I understanding you correctly that the DNR has given their approval? Now, does that have to go back to the planning and zoning again?
Gotta have a public hearing.
Then we gotta have a public hearing, so how long are we? Um, cause I think those things need to be, um, communicated to, to those folks.
Next planning meeting is on the fifth of September, is it?
So if it's on the fifth of September.
Call for the public hearing, it could be on the eleventh of, well, no, it's gonna have to be the twenty-fifth.
So the twenty-fifth council meeting.
Yep.
So my, and then after that.
They're ready to go.
Okay. So we need to make sure those things get put in place, cause this has been delayed long enough, in my opinion. So, let's get, make sure that we get, get on the planning zoning, get that done, get the public hearing set up. And then notify the Gramsteads that those are the, the dates that were.
Twenty-sixth, that should be good to go.
Should be good to go.
Um, I hate to beat a dead horse, but going back to the, um, infrastructure replacement reserve fund, the process, what you're proving tonight is just a preliminary resolution. That has to vote to be published, um, they have ten days to submit a petition if the public does, if they want to petition it. The final vote on that will take place on the twenty-fifth of, of September, so I just.
Thank you. The last thing I wanted on there, Mr. Mayor, was I'd just like to, as you all know, my, my wife and I volunteer and maintain the Veltar gazebo property. And, uh, I just want to publicly thank Frank and Marjorie Nielsen for their help with that. They do a tremendous job with the flower gardens there, um, and that's, that's a big, uh, you know, that, that garden would not look the same without those flowers. So, I just want to publicly thank them for doing that, and I would encourage any of you, if you see them, uh, please do so as well. Because they do that completely on their own time, no charge, they don't ask for any money from the city, so I just want to thank them for that.
You know what, I want to add to that, because if we're gonna thank them, we should also thank Marion Ingram and Connie Anderson for taking care of the other ones around town that they do. Cause they do a good job too, so thank you for both of those groups of people.
Something you'd want, a certificate of appreciation, things that, oh, for.
Sure. Yes. Anything else?
Make a motion, we move into closed session.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, meeting closed.